Have you seen what's on his nose?
No, he always has.
No, I didn't think he was all...
He must have seen it. Maybe he just had any teeth.
Is he really?
He's swatting.
I think he's gonna speak.
Well, that's not...
That's it. Give it now.
Very.
Definitely.
How are you?
I'm fine.
As long as it takes to get the body cam. I guess you don't need one.
I think we're all gonna get it. Does that get broken?
Let's get some snow. Let it rip.
I mean, it shouldn't take long, I would think. It's those first ones. That's what everybody...
It's a good maple.
Well, I think it'll... I think it'll be awful, but forever. You don't think it'll be awful?
Wow, so...
That's a wild thing.
Yeah.
You realize you're being watched.
Well... I've been working for most of... I've been working for 23 years. I've been working for crazy. Totally.
Yes, it wants you.
Somebody probably...
Yeah. Oh, huh.
Keep on his personal...
Keep on him.
Big, too.
Okay, wait.
Are you ready?
I'm saying it.
I only need to fix an eight in a game over. We can't practice.
We're out of...
Don't you talk to me?
Oh, we talk to...
RB's down the road and didn't even find them in America.
Is there no voice out?
I cried. It was like... I gave him a crawl.
I'm trying to share a big game, man.
At San Jose?
Though it's local. But there's like, pretty painy. It's cold, cold.
I mean, is it cold? I know the kids can... It's gonna affect the... You know, affect the cold.
Either that or just... They just do a little H and M.
Well, I mean, you're just gonna have a bunch of sick kids.
Oh, I know. I really practice. Or take...
I won't...
That's how I serve. And I hope it's a long one. It's right in my best...
You know what y'all have?
I like to come from...
My favorite.
Hello, hello, hello. What's up, sir?
You can get that. Sure you did that.
Not a year.
Now, but you're here.
When you come and say we have ham.
I know. Now, we're in New Year. Maybe we can get it worked in a day.
Andy, Andy Harris. He's gonna... He's on our board. He's, uh... He's gonna start doing some things for us.
Whoa. You're good hands.
But listen, we still need you.
I've got a book that... About honey flats.
About honey flats?
Honey flats.
Yeah, I was telling them. I said, "Don't they give me something to drink?" Because they didn't give me nothing to drink. And I felt like it was like my crawl.
Did you write him a book?
He did.
He's smart.
Yeah. She... August. And I'll definitely... Just give him a beer or less.
I think I'll...
What is this? Yeah. I'm gonna stay in this as well. It's cold.
Yeah. It'll be easier on me.
Well, you know, I used to think I cared.
Yeah.
I hear some...
Yeah. See, I was...
When I found my dog.
I'm glad about that. Tell them that.
I saw one of them.
Can't read or write in sometimes.
Absolutely.
I'll be right back. I got Frankie's app. Dr. Roush.
Ever seen you? Uh, you've never seen me?
Oh, I'm Roush. I play Roush.
She's the bass.
She needs a bass.
What'd you say?
She likes her bass.
Your bass. Keeping people blind.
No, we never on the squirrel.
The narrative of...
That's what I got.
I have noise, too.
Where you wanna go to the ballgame and sound?
You got one?
No. I don't focus on...
Well, if you'd say these two.
Hey.
You have an alley. And then maybe... inauguration. So I got tickets for that, too.
Oh, I got those. Thank you.
Oh.
I want your liquor sign in there, Mark.
I need to talk more changes with Alston. Like I heard him announce it.
Oh, I know. But... I mean, I'm... I mean, I'm...
I have a kid.
Bridge doors on the initial... Everybody was telling us once. But they don't...
So I can only travel.
I have those deals pretty...
Have you seen my list? Hey. You understand? You're a friend of that.
No, for what?
All right.
Uh-uh.
Were you... What's your job?
Who is?
When I was...
Was saying in, um... St. Keely?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
But when I was... First, I was gonna do one shit.
It's not... Good day.
You're good, Leah.
Well, hello. Did Missy send it down?
I don't know. I don't know.
You know, I think... Playing politics, saying...
And so I was kinda...
You have to pick the front.
Especially... You were saying... I was...
Not torn. I'm saying yours is it to you in person because yours is...
Secret service. Ran it.
You didn't get yours in person?
I did.
I see.
I had my person.
But you're not Spanish.
I'll...
He got his first.
It's a bit tough. It is.
Yeah.
Well, then I got one. I thought that was just coming up. Holy cow!
Women's enlistment. They often being said... When we check, you know?
Oh, yeah.
No, we didn't... I said, "No."
Or say they have it. What's this? Just all over.
There's 20 of them.
Yeah.
Before we got that car. They said, "Cause we gotta take it." We're 20 of them. And this guy said...
I think we're...
Yeah, but nothing like that.
Want this. We can live 23. 23.
You care to send me that? Don't go on my god. No, no, no. It's surrounded.
But does that mean with that list of... Probably with that... The property says we're gonna have to find a selling at that price? No, that's... So they're just coming in with that.
So... So it's...
I just... I just like...
You doing like good things?
No, I mean... There's faster than five. This week. It's like... It's like a lottery.
Is there a pair on your name? Nobody. Sorry, just sitting. I'm like... He's like, "Hey, there's 23."
I'm 23.
Second time he's... He's up on work. Or it's on... Not the second. It's... Going... You know, perfect. Thanks for me. You said, "Perfect." When you finish this thing, you're on. 22.
And then I want to say that.
26. So that's... Whatever. What is...
He had her baby. Basically, I can't...
It's guys. You know, okay. The only... See, he goes... Everybody thinks it's a micro... I don't know. It's small. I don't know. But he's all for it. By the way, it's... Or whatever.
I don't...
So it goes down.
So then it's just... It's a wash. Then I mean... No, am I taking...
Yeah.
It was now.
Oh, I'm good.
Oh, okay. I thought you had... God.
Oh, my God. I was just... Doing it so I could call along.
Now, Ms. Zane come get me. I'm a good father.
Um... I'm always gonna get that. It's about hot.
We're kind of missing... We're gonna miss them next year.
Yeah, that's right.
5,000.
You're getting paper. You deserve...
Okay.
Last chair.
He wouldn't be...
Okay. All right, that's cool.
You're thanks, son. One of my friends sent it.
I think so.
Where's your miss? Why?
You can read something with your tail.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah. No. Not Lottie Ryan's.
Is it Turkish to be?
He's saying... I need to... I know you or that you or know your name. Maybe it's just your campaign.
How are you?
Nice to meet you. Okay. Okay. How are you? Okay.
See, we got much better. I forgot your... I forgot your trunks inside. That's all. I'm...
I just wanna say that. A little respect.
Oh, not me, my man.
I mean...
I'll leave that.
My wheel's spinning now. He's more friendly.
Oh, boy.
He knew it just before me. So...
Well, hey, how you doing, bro? You live in, uh... Lebanon, right? Is that where you... Where you live at Lebanon?
Cross.
Cross.
It was just... It just drove right up. I had a... I had a...
He was... He's getting used to these people. He's here to... I have times... Cause my... My people is very different. It's just like, oh. I was sorry. Don't have to say...
That was in my day.
What a fight. It was...
Yeah, that 3600.
That's my...
So you play any golf?
I was...
Is that like 33?
No, it's not like this. It's outside. I'm... I was...
Yeah. The golf is...
And that's the way to...
See, I play golf. Well, I hit the ball. Yeah. I try to hit the ball. I didn't hit it. Yeah. I had my money. I dig a few holes wide out there, too. So... Yeah, man. Everybody's like, "Well, it only takes me four hours to play red and golf." And I'm like, "I get my money's worth." I got three, about five, five and a half.
People go out there and say, "It works." And only hit seven. I'm broke, man.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
It's a pretty decent little course. And I'll never forget. So I, uh... I shot under par on the front nine. And I was like, "Heck, yeah." And then I shot like a 45 on the back. And I was like... You know, I'm like... I'm kidding. That was a... You know, I ended up with like the high eights. And I was just like, "This is... This is terrible." Well, like, for how it started.
Yeah.
It was in therapy, you know? So... Basically, like... Yeah. Yeah, he's asked his allergist and made that look new.
I will.
Well, your father's... Like, they have a beard.
Fourth. What'd you do? You wanted to... I had his... He's... Oh, it's... Yeah. But, uh... I like skin.
Education for a lot of times.
He follows his...
I can't find one by Saint Croix.
So... He's real good.
Yeah. He's like big with her.
Yeah, yeah. Of course, I talked to him. He got engaged. About this one. I told him. He's like, "Yeah, we can go play golf." He goes...
Playing it on your own?
I'd be ashamed. Like, uh... He's like, you know, I have a... I have a rich couple. You know?
What have they... Why does that... To take...
He said, "Yeah." You know? I bought... Bought my house. Got engaged, you know? And then he had to go. He never met her family before they got engaged. So he had to go, like, before they got engaged, he had to go meet her family. And so this is like... Every free time I have. And then it goes down the weather. I just wanna see you all the time.
I've seen that people.
That's not complaining. It's still... Try to date her. Very busy at work, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what he was telling me is, uh...
Yeah.
They, uh... They're putting on a 12-hour live speech. That's right.
Very... All teachers.
I used to be a teacher. I used to do 22.
He's like... That would be...
Oh. He's a psychologist or something.
And mine is so...
Like, sports bar. And he's having to do like this weird line. Swish, shoo.
Mom's gone. My laptop works like that. But you know, mommy's laptop. We have a place mommy uses.
And then it's still on. Oh. I'm like...
I think I've already, you know, they did. It's just like these phones, see? Yeah. You... You're married to the... You should be doing... Well, I know...
How are you?
I'm doing all right. How you doing?
Right there. Anyhow.
Well, I got my...
Is it Nick?
Nick, I love Nick. He's great.
Nick put, uh, candy. I love it.
Good.
I, uh... The name is... From cookies.
Did he get cookies?
Not yet. I took candy. I'm sure he's... I'm not sure. So he's going. He's up to something. He's a customer.
Nick, yeah.
And that's what we gave her.
I just... He was there at the county commission meeting. And I asked him permission for his company. But it's been great. I just stepped in.
I landed. Yeah. That's... Really good. Zach's...
Yeah. So really good.
And he was a part of... I can say that.
That's a fear.
That's what I wrote last... Well, I think he's supposed to stick around right now. What was that for? He sounds... He sounds like another one out there.
Yeah, Chuck... Chuck Calle said, "E-Mark, you got this." Cause he was in the back on... Doing bill or something.
And he said...
So, well, that's help. Yeah. So you asked him. Said, "You..."
If I remember... I was... You were... You were behind. Yeah, he was behind. And I was sitting right... I was right next to the podium. And he... And I was going...
I guess my under par. And it's...
He needs to try. He meant for anything.
It should be... Come on.
Yeah.
I just had to go buy my own laptop. I mean, like, we just saw our granddaughter. And I was like, "Oh, yeah." I did new amples.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to be...
You have to be sorry. I'm just... I'm just trying to... Help you here. So my head held me. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We all have to... We all have to... We're on that. But it's... It's... We're aligned. It's not... Yeah. We're not spirits.
I wasn't trying to be. I was just...
No, I'm not ready yet. But I still gotta get my... My youngest out. Well, she's... That's how she... Well, she's seven. She's around 17.
Just say from that. Make sure that she's... Red, they... And then... Got it. Um...
Yeah.
Just ask students to... And red and... Bring it. Yeah. Please, I'm surprised. Or not supposed to be... Said during... Here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because you can say that. I... And you're... I'm... I say it now. Again.
Sure, it's... Right. Out there, whatever we're talking about. I think it was red. And then... Again. Well, she, uh... She... She's online. She... So it's like... Um... She said it. She... She... She's... She... 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 She's... She's... She... And if... I mean, if you're gonna ask... You must be... Say... Which is... Pretty much... She was... She was... Breaking. She was... She was... She was... Yeah. Not... Not... Yeah. Very... I'm important to the commission. In that section. Because... Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh... If I'm remembering, the only thing I said was they were asking me, like, "Why you..." Like, "Why you..." Or done, and I was like, "Just because of the timing of it."
Been helping us do some research and get some things in line. And I believe Lottie is going to share. But I've known Lottie for many years through the first Tennessee Developmental District, which being in Hamlin County, we were kind of on the peripheral of that. But because we were part of the first core region, which is primarily the area for first Tennessee Developmental District, where I was able to kind of join forces and work with all the districts up here in Hamlin County. So started bringing groups up to attend the Career Quest and the different career events that Lottie made available to our students in Sullivan County, Hawkins County, Green, on and on and on, all the districts. And that's just a tip of the iceberg of the work that Lottie does. And Andrea has been very beneficial. But I hope I'm not going to steal your thunder. But I read an article or saw an article in a, I guess it was a news brief or a newspaper or brochure about some work that the first Tennessee Development District had done with getting a child daycare in Hancock County. And I said, that's, I hear it all the time up here. I think this could be something that really could benefit us up here in Sullivan County. And actually had talked a little bit with Steve Barnett at the time. And in Johnson City, they have a childcare too, actually, in their physical system. So contacted Lottie and said, hey, any way we can maybe get some support on the work that was done there? And so that led to just developing a good conversation, to doing some site visits over there in Johnson City, to working with Andrea a lot closer on finding out if this is even something that would be beneficial or needed or could help us here in Sullivan County. So they would be very gracious to help us. We did a survey and they got some additional information to share. And so I'm going to make a presentation out of that. I'll tell you what I see as a vision, which we're about to get the board's approval and about to move forward with. So Lottie, can I turn it over to you?
Thank you all. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. So Lottie Ryan's Tennessee Development District. I'm the Director of Workforce and Literacy Initiatives. And in that role, really you just look for creative solutions to really help bring our region forward in terms of a workforce development perspective. Also making sure we're really from, say, birth to retirement, that we are looking at things that can help our businesses, things that can help our region in general. I had an opportunity during COVID to, well, actually before COVID, we were working on the Early Developmental Instrument, it's a tool called the EDI with, out of UCLA, worked with ETSU. And through that process, had a chance to meet the folks from Tennessee, Tennessee Institute for Quality of Early Education. I don't know if you've ever had any exposure to that organization or not, but learned about things around childcare. And during COVID, started really seeing the impact that lack of childcare was having on our businesses. So we had several issues happening. We had people who wanted to go to work, didn't have a place to send their children. We had childcare centers that didn't have people coming to work, just lots of the perfect storm was happening around that. During that time, we worked with Washington County Schools, Washington County Government, and we created a space for people who were essential workers, healthcare workers, for example, to be able to bring their children for a centralized learning center. But during that process, we started going, what else is going on that's impacting childcare? So what things we're finding is that daycare centers had wait lists of 200 plus. I'm like, the kid will be graduated from high school before, there's an opening there. Childcare centers were not able to keep all of their classrooms open. Directors were actually closing centers. So the problem was getting worse and worse. So as part of my role and work in workforce, it was like, well, I've got to figure out how we can help play in this space and help our counties. Our Board of Directors at the Development District, if you're not familiar with this, it's all the county, city, and town mayors. Our whole purpose is to help our region thrive. We have people who help do grant writing for water projects for all kinds of road projects. We have people who help with housing. We have people who help with the senior population. And then I came into this role after I retired from corporate America, just really look at what we could do on workforce. So we said, how can we be in this space? We worked with folks in Nashville to build a website to try to get information about daycare centers out. We did, built a, with Andrea's help, built a childcare center. We were just looking at ways to help. We were able to bring Andrea on to really have a focus on childcare, to say, okay, how can we lean into this? So as we did that, Andrea has learned a lot about regulations and just different things that are happening. We work with economic development entities. We work with businesses who are interested in bringing childcare facilities to their business. We are working with the City of Johnson City on the potential of having a business that's going to have a childcare center in it. One of the things I had hoped for a long time and hadn't really approached the school systems is that other school systems would have the vision to look at what Johnson City had been doing for a long time. Johnson City got into the, I was on the Johnson City Board of Education for a long time, a long time ago. And that actually started with a very different need. It wasn't the same kind of business need we see today. At that time, there was more issues with keeping the kids who were having babies in school, to be honest. But a lot has changed since then. We have a labor force participation issue across our state where we like for people to come to work. We have people who want to come to work, and there's a lot of pressure than us and their children. We have a lack of people with the training to be childcare workers. So lots of things were happening. And as I'm sure you already know, as you hired Chuck for his vision on many things, when he sees a problem that he feels like he can solve, he's going to go after it. So thrilled when he reached out to us to say, hey, what can you guys do in this space? So Andrea has worked tirelessly to be able to bring information to bear. She's going to share some statistics that are Tennessee specific, that are Sullivan County specific, and some of the whys. And so what we hope tonight is to answer any questions you may have. Yes, there's still work and information to pull together. But I hope that this is a compelling story for why, you know, using space you have available is a smart thing to do. It's good for the school system. It's good for the business community. It's good for your community in general. It's good for the families, and especially those that are employees of your school system. So excited to have Andrea here. And again, thank you for letting us be here tonight.
Thank you all for having me. Thanks, Lottie, for explaining. I'm going to start out, we're going to go through this, sort of a summary of the survey results we got from the schools' employees. And also I'm going to give a little bit at the beginning of sort of the picture of the landscape, all the lines giving a preview. So across the region, the state, and the country, our communities are struggling to find a way to meet the workforce demands of industry while supporting the needs of the workforce. Pre-pandemic, our childcare providers were struggling to balance competitive workforce compensation with affordability for parents. Post-pandemic, we find ourselves in a top of prices where, as the lowest paying industry in Tennessee, childcare has lost nearly 10% of their workforce. This negatively affects the supply, the stability, and the quality of the childcare workforce, causing high turnover, discouraging new recruits, and creating an unstable workforce. Childcare providers are forced to reduce the number of childcare slots available or close their doors completely. As an essential part of the economic and workforce environment, childcare provides support for working families and intern employers throughout our communities. The lack of access, affordability, and quality in our current childcare landscape is adversely affecting the labor force at large. These statistics are from U.S. Census Bureau, Department of Human Services, and U.S. Department of Labor, and talent.com. As you can see, Sullivan County, total estimated number of children under six, which that's eligible for childcare, is about 74.59. And the total number of licensed childcare slots in Sullivan County is quite a bit less than.
That's what stood out to me. And our employees are part of that right there. And as you'll see through the survey that we conducted, it comes out, the evidence comes out that this is an issue. You're basically two to one.
Yes, exactly. A little more. And it's expensive. For 2024, childcare tuition per toddler is over $8,000. And for infants, which is the least available in a higher teacher-to-student ratio, it's $12,270 a year. And sadly, our median hourly wage for childcare teacher in Kingsport is about $12 an hour. That's about an average across our bigger counties. So it's hard to keep people in open mortgages when you're not able to pay. So it's a critical balance for childcare. Working parents are facing many challenges in our region. In a recent study by Tennessee Institute for Quality of Early Education, in 2022, they surveyed over 2,500 parents in Tennessee with young children and found that parents in our region reported most of their significant challenges in finding childcare were in access, affordability, and quality. Accessibility includes challenges with respect to location, open childcare spots, matching care hours with work schedules and changing shifts, emergency childcare needs, and special education needs. Many childcare providers are not able to offer non-traditional hours or a moment during the full working year, which these parents scrambling to find substantial rest or coverage to remain in the workforce while making difficult decisions. As you can see, with 90% of working parents in workforce altogether. Affordability is also a challenge for working families. Department of Labor estimates that childcare tuition in Sullivan County in 2024 costs around 15.4% of median income of the average family. From birth at age five, this is around quality, a child's brain develops more and more rapidly than at any other time in life. 90% of the child's brain develops by age five. So the quality of childcare will have a profound impact on their future and the future of our workforce. In that same study, our TQE, they found that Northeast Tennessee's annual economic losses due to insufficient childcare were $63.2 million and $2.6 billion across the state. These numbers were derived from reduced tax revenue losses from lower productivity, reduced revenue, increased hiring and retention costs, and lost profits as well as reduced earnings. So it has a profound impact on our economic health. And now the survey. We took the survey in November, and we had almost 330% response rate, which is fantastic. And this data will kind of create a profile of what your respondents and what relationship is. So we asked questions to understand their role in the school system. Of the employees surveyed, 76% are full-time, 10 months a year; 2% full-time, 10 and a half to 11 months a year; 9% are full-time, 12 months a year; and 12% are part-time. 62% are educators, 12% are parent pro or teacher assistants, 15% support staff, 7% are administrators, and 5% other, which I'm not sure. And when it came time, came to time spent with the school system, 4% have been with the system for less than a year, 15% for two to three years, 11% for four to five years, 17% for six to 10 years, and 53% for more than 10 years. The surveyed employees were asked about specific challenges that they are currently facing when it comes to childcare and work. They can select up to three options. At 62%, the majority struggled with juggling work and home responsibilities, resulting in 54% burnout from managing those responsibilities. Childcare-specific challenges were varied. Finding affordable childcare was a challenge for 20% of respondents. Finding available childcare was a challenge for 9%. And at 8%, about the same found it challenging to find childcare that coordinates with their work hours. After-school hours was about the same at 8%. And finding childcare support for summer hours and finding consistent childcare that is reliable was a challenge for about 4%. Employees were asked to select all the answers that represented their caregiving situation. 53% of those surveys have at least one child who lives with them full-time and for whom they have caregiving responsibilities. 6% have part-time caregiving responsibilities for a child. And 5% have a disabled, sick, or nearly loved one to care for. 5% of those surveyed do not have current caregiving responsibilities but are starting or planning to start a family. And this is the age breakdown of the children of Sullivan County employees, Sullivan County Schools employees, sorry. They were asked to select all the ages that apply to all of their children. And as the data shows, close to 29% of these children are between zero and five years old and eligible for childcare. Employees of Sullivan County Schools were asked what their childcare arrangements were for their children, to understand their access to childcare. The survey showed that only 43% of these parents have consistent access to full-time childcare, and 42% of them say their family is without childcare. 8% have access to consistent part-time childcare, but it doesn't cover all their work hours. 7% have part-time access to childcare, but it is inconsistent or unpredictable. In conclusion, the data shows that 57% of your employees with children under age six have either insufficient or no access to childcare. We asked parents who had childcare arrangements what they were and to select all the options that applied. The results were varied for children of all ages. Many of your parents have to cobbled together caregiving arrangements for their children during working hours to get full coverage. At 14%, a fair number of employees are relying on partners and family to help care for their children while they're working. Working parents often have to make difficult decisions when it comes to work and childcare responsibilities. Employees with children are asked to select all actions that they had taken to secure childcare during their employment with the school system, and if they had to, had had to make any tough choices due to insufficient childcare. A significant 26% do not have a childcare arrangement. 17% change to a new childcare or licensed in-home childcare, and 14% hire a babysitter as a result of insufficient childcare services. 13% have considered leaving the school system, and almost 5% have considered changing positions. 9% have taken a leave of absence to care for their children. Many of the respondents have had to find solutions to keep both, to both keep working and to take care of their children. 5% moved to part-time capacity or had to change their work hours. Another 5% of respondents, partners or spouses, moved to part-time, took a leave of absence or left their capacity at work. 5% have moved or are considering leaving to be closer to family for support. And 3% rely on friends and family to step in when they, when needed for childcare. When asked about the effects of insufficient childcare has had on work attendance, employees of Sullivan County Schools were almost evenly split on the amount of time they missed. We asked less than a week, about a week or more than a week. Of the surveyed employees with children who are paying for childcare or plan to pay for childcare services, 49% find the cost high but are still able to remain in the workforce. 11% find the cost manageable or affordable, and notable 17% find it high and are considering leaving the workforce. When survey participants were asked what kind of impact they thought childcare provided by the school system would have on employees, they were overwhelmingly positive. 92.7% or greater of all respondents shared that they thought childcare would have some to great impact in all listed categories: quality, engagement, reputation, productivity, retention, and workplace culture. The end result of the survey collected has demonstrated a need and a support for childcare among employees of Sullivan County Schools. Looked at other surveys also, and I think most of this is from an HR survey, and they confirmed that childcare benefits can boost your bottom line. On-site childcare has been shown to decrease employee absences by 30% and job turnover declines by as much as 60%. 86% of employers say that childcare benefits have a positive impact on talent recruitment and retention. And 88% of employers report childcare benefits help boost productivity. It was a, I don't have it on cam, but it was an HR survey for larger employers. I can find it for you.
That's okay.
Yeah. Sullivan County Schools has a great opportunity to find, offer their staff and students both high-quality childcare for their employees and early childhood education, work-based learning opportunities for their CTE students. Survey respondents were overwhelmingly supportive of the idea of combining an early childhood education learning program with work-based learning to create childcare for the children of employees. The school system has built, has some built-in advantages to opening a childcare such as existing infrastructure. Space is one of the largest barriers, finding a space for childcare is one of the largest barriers that, that's what we've been finding. You already have children that need childcare, and you have resources and support for teacher assistants and access to funding opportunities. As Lottie mentioned, we're, it's based on a proven model in our region, which Topper Talk has been around for 25-plus years. It's self-sustaining and has expanded to second location. Your infrastructure, retention, and recruitment tools for Sullivan County Schools would remove barriers to employment for young families and single parents. And it would, all of these things would be great. Also, the CTE, early childhood education with future teachers in training, offers an opportunity for both ECE students and on-site childcare. The workers learning hands-on learning with children would be invaluable for students. And the high adult-to-student ratio in childcare offers safer and higher quality childcare for the students. Many, many years ago, when I was in high school, we had the SAA. Early childhood program around for CTE. These were just a couple of comments from the survey, reactions from the employees about the idea of combining the CTE with childcare. And it was one of many comments, three of many comments, but they were all very positive. And to Chuck.
So just to kind of set up what I'm putting this as, I thought this was something that would be a good recruiting tool, a good service offered to our employees in Sullivan County. And the CTE aspect of it, to connect our students in programs such as teaching as a profession, the health science, which is what Science Hill has students going in there for health science as well. And then the early childhood education is the one that's a direct connection that we don't currently have, but we are looking, I'm talking to Debbie about, that is a program that would be beneficial just because the demand is there in the workforce, the need is there in the workforce, the, we saw the ratio there. And then the fact that what, what we can provide our students is a TESA, is a, generates funds, and we'll talk about that. So when Lottie and Andrea agreed to help just come up with this information, that's, they don't do much else than that. They're here to support us and help give us resources and find, you know, information. We've worked with the Department of Education, Department of Health, Health.
Fire Safety.
Yeah, we had the Fire.
Fire Marshal.
Marshal and the Department of Human Services, which is that.
Well, it was DOE.
DOE.
Yeah.
DOE and DH.
DHS is the other. There's two governing bodies for childcare.
For childcare.
Yeah. And we would be less, if we do it, it's three.
It'd be more of the DOE.
Yeah.
Department of Education. So we got all, all the pieces together and then trying to come up with, showing you how it would look. And the big thing was the self-sustaining part, that it supports itself, so we're not investing money into the teachers. And then the, basically the classroom is a lab for our students, much like a culinary arts kitchen or a welding shop, welding lab. This is a workshop or a lab station for those students and those career pathways to join their work and generate TESA dollars through their direct funding that they can generate. So we, we've looked at, had Bill Virchard there, Debbie's been there, Kathy Nester's been there, because it would involve all those parts. We were looking at a space over at the Annex, going behind Sullivan Central Middle, and the entrance will be back on the back side there of that campus where the Annex is. There's, there's two classrooms, a birth to two-year-old classroom, and then a two-to-four-year-old classroom. And both of those would need some remodeling, but we would be able to have, and the birth to two, we'd be able to have eight children there, which is a one-to-four ratio, so there'd be two teachers. And then the three and four-year-olds, before they go to pre-K, we would be able to have 16 children in a one-to-eight ratio with two teachers. And then the director. And so the tuition off of those students, and we would open it up to our teachers, our employee, all employees, to fill those spots. So that's the recruitment part for our teachers. And I believe the survey showed we have a demand for childcare, just like everywhere else. That's, that's a big issue. In my own family, I know that's the case, and that's part of my reasoning thing about this, is our daughter has two children who are pre-K or below pre-K childcare. They pay, you know, upwards of $1,500 a month for those two kids. It's almost to the point where she's saying, it's not really worth it for me to be working. And so I feel, I feel the plight of our employees in that aspect. So then you go down to the next, with the work-based learning. And every student that works, they, they're almost a one-to-one ratio now with the children and, not an adult, but a person who can work with those children. Either a student work-based learning, which is typically going to be a junior or senior, and then you'll have the actual work there supervising them that's working with the children as well. So you're getting it down to close to a one-to-two or one-to-one ratio for those small children, which is developmentally very, very positive.
Valuable, yeah.
Yeah, valuable, because it's going to help them out. So, and being prepared for the pre-K. But if you do the breakdown, currently, a work-based learning course code is that where it says 36 times two semesters equals 72, work-based learning placements times 1250. That's what work-based learning course code generates is 1250. So every student that we put into that, that center would be generating 1250 per semester for that one classroom. And that's how many potentially we could have working in there, is up to 72 students a year. And that would generate, through that direct funding on TESA, $90,000 in potential. And then I've been talking to Debbie about the graded CTE, there is a purchase reserve grant that'll be opened up in the spring. It's a competitive grant, so there's no guarantees. But I talked to Candy Collier, who's the CTE Director for the state, not the CTE. Senior, what's Candy's title? Senior Executive.
Executive CTE.
She's right under.
It's about this long.
Yeah. But she. But, but she, the way I presented to her, telling her we were going to be applying for that Perkins Reserve, she felt very good about the chances that we would be in line to get it. Because this program would be similar to the LPN program that we currently just are starting. Our goal would be students would graduate with an AAS degree from Northeast State Community College. They would have their CDA, which is the.
Certified Development.
Certified Development. Certified Development.
Child Development Assessment.
Right, certification. And they would be able to walk right into a job as well.
And there's a great need for that.
Yes.
I work for Valid.
Oh, okay. So, you know.
Yes.
Ms. Madge would be either the Perkins Reserve Grant. She's prepared when it comes out to, to do that. And then we've even talked about if there are ISM grant funds that are available still, that she would, I could be able to use some of those as well. So, I, I think for the most part, we can get it underway. If we wanted to do this and we wanted to start in the fall though, we need to get started on it. And so, it, it could mean to be asked to the board to get, get some funds so we can get the work started now.
But we may get that back.
Maybe we may get that back through the grant if we can use the ISM especially.
Ms. Madge, have you, have you seen any templates from other people who's applied for the grant? Have you looked at somebody else's grants yet? Have you seen any?
As far as the Perkins Reserve Grants?
Have you seen some grants other people have written?
For this particular, I have not. However, I do know that Johnson City has used some of their Perkins Basic Funds to cover, you know, some of the.
If you had seen it, maybe you thought the odds were you'd be successful based on that.
Sometimes I think that the focus of every year's Perkins Reserve Grant, because I've written one every year that I've been here. And we've gotten one every other year. So, but it just depends on, you know, if you hit the focus and the intention of the, of the grant as well as prioritizing and what the funds are for, then you're more likely to, to get the grants.
At the development district, we can also look to see if there are any other grants to ECD or any other entity that we get visibility to grants to say, is there something? Because you're going to be providing employment for the director and for teachers. So, a lot of the grants we go for, what, what's the employment impact, right? And then you're going to also be helping retain employees. So, there's a lot of factors that would give a good grant score, but we can also look for opportunities if that one does it.
And that's what I think from a Perkins perspective is it makes the workforce need, which is what all Perkins is about, is workforce development. And developing those pipelines. But then it's also benefiting our students by giving them a pathway to, to work to go into and, and helping our lack of teachers. So, you're able to get people to go back into the job market that might be staying home because of childcare.
Those Perkins Grants don't usually come with any string, any strings of tax duty. Except for using, I mean, anything other than.
Just reporting, reporting as far as outcomes that the grant has created, you know, for the system or for the program.
So, send us a little.
You have to produce outcomes, a report, as far as the reports.
What kind of outcome would they be looking for from this?
Things like early post-secondary opportunities, math, such as dual enrollment, dual credit and certifications, which will be the CDA. And then work-based learning opportunities.
That's the one I thought.
So, a, all those things that provide TESA funding or generate TESA funding back to us.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
But I work for Valid. Valid has just recently, in the last year, opened up eight centers regional, in the region. And we cater to the medical field. So, our hours for our Centers for Early Learning are six AM to seven PM because the medical field, they couldn't find childcare to accommodate their hours. So, we're having a hard time finding people to work those hours that have certification. And I didn't know about the CDA degree or the credentials for the CDA. I come from Southern County Schools, taught twenty-nine years in kindergarten and was hired as, as an Assistant Director to work for Valid's Center for Early Learning. And I'm learning a lot about this and it's, it's a fabulous concept for, for the medical field. And the, but, the problem is, is they can't find people to work because teachers getting a four-year degree want to go work in a school system. But people that just love children want to work, may not want to go to a four-year college, may just want to work with children. And if they can get a certification and get out of high school doing this program and be able to make more than just minimum wage and work with children, it is going to help our workforce in this area, especially it with, with our center, I'm now at the King Sports Center. We have six teachers and our, we have six teachers, but we all need two assistants in each class. So, we're, we're, the centers are, the, the, the demand for employee is high in our centers. So, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that, I want to know, you know, there, if that can add to what you say in the grant, the chances of employment after the high school graduation is very high.
Well, with the hours you all are working, you also could have some assistants, but I do want to go to college.
Right.
They could do both because it's not an extended shift.
Right.
So, they could come there higher paid because they have the certification and potentially go on to do whatever other.
Exactly, if they come to work for Valid, Valid pays for your education.
This is, this is basically have.
Place we have.
Heating and cooling. I, I, I did get the opportunity to, to look at those classrooms. They're a really safe location and there's a place that they could play.
Playground.
That's just the most protected area you can imagine. If a concrete wall was thirty feet or forty feet high on one side of the school on the other, no way really, on the lonely end. So, it's a good, safe place from what I saw. The classrooms, it's not going to require just a ton of renovation either. I mean, really good condition.
Bathroom space was the, the biggest.
And plumbing, we could live there.
And if licensing's already been there, I mean, licensing's not going to let you do anything there. So, they're very strict.
Would you, like, the employees that wanted to take their kids there, how, what do you charge on that?
Well, that would have to be determined, that we would try to be marketable, you know, competitive and less than the, the market. The current private sector. Because that's, we want to use it as a draw.
They've already done so.
I mean, and, and only because we have Johnson City as a model that's already placed. They've got waiting lists for teachers and employees that, you know, it's like we were saying, their kids will be going through school before they would ever make it to the, it's because they got such a high demand for it.
And if you didn't have enough teachers, there's enough demand in the community.
Yes.
I don't think you'd ever have to worry about having teachers with no students.
Well, and it's, it's opening up other childcare spots, slots in the community.
In the community because people.
Oh, can you go back to, I'm sorry. Can you go back to that other slot, the previous slide? So, I'll do two teachers. Do we need two teachers or one teacher, one assistant, or do I have the two certified teachers? Ingrid, I'm assuming that we would need teachers with early childhood certification. Do we have those? A Hopper that you're aware of?
You know, I've currently placed my last one that I had, so I don't have anybody in the Hopper that I'm.
I knew that that was a certification that was not, there weren't a lot out there. So, the classroom teacher that would be supervising the nine work-based learning students, is that just the work-based learning supervisor of the high school that could, that would, that they would be attached under?
Right, the work-based learning coordinator.
Would that be like the fire science instructor or the nursing?
Well, they would also have a Teaching as a Profession, there would be an instructor. And then if we added the Early Childhood Education Program, that instructor would be involved as well. But as far as, you know, site visits would be the work-based learning coordinator.
So, I have another question. What would the hours be on that?
We would use the model that we looked at and it's the same as a school calendar. When we're out of school.
Yeah, I'm saying like the hours of the day. Because like, say you got an East teacher that wants to bring their kid down here. I mean, they're going to have to drop off at like seven at the minimum.
It's not going to help the East end. If this goes well, there'll have to be another one.
That's what, that's.
Geographically, it just doesn't. I mean, I'm going, I'm going to have to get a Ford to transport my kid, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I know what you're saying on the time, what, what is the time?
Central would be centrally located though. I mean, the county.
I mean, I don't know.
You've got people all the way down in Blair's Gap and Solon Gardens. I mean, they would have to drop probably about as far as the people from East to get to Central.
Depending. The, the East zone geographically is as large as what used to be north, south and central together. East is larger than those three.
Yeah, if you like lived up there, the Jacobs. Jacobs Creek, you're way.
But, but what is, what is the, I mean, you're just looking at the time that would be primary school starting.
Yeah, so because you got to give, you got to give them.
To get to work.
Yeah, yeah, and then also get back and pick up too. So, that's, that's what I was asking about the hours on that.
Most daycare centers don't open.
Four thirty or five.
Yeah, but, so what would be the opening time though?
They need to be probably seven.
Seven at least.
That's what, and so.
Seven to four thirty.
So, and so, then, now we get into my, my last question here. So, these two teachers, technically, you know, they're on a ten-month contract. How do we, do, do we give them a stipend for staying, like coming in an hour early and leaving an hour late? You know, like. Yeah, so, because this is a little bit more expense that we got to think of too. Like, I'm for the project, but I'm just, I'm trying to get my head around it. I'm just didn't know if you had an idea.
And I think that would also be ten dollars for all of those teachers.
They had two shifts. They had a morning shift and an afternoon shift for just the director.
So, you wouldn't have the two teachers in the room all the time, just one of them at a time.
They hadn't allowed that lunch and exchange, like what happened in the morning with the afternoon teacher?
Now, I think Mr. Robinson, you correct if I'm wrong, you're, you're saying the two teachers, I think we're talking about four part-time.
Yeah, but there's two separate rooms.
Right, what would I mean?
Yeah, like say the zero of two, both teachers ain't going to be there the whole time.
Yeah, because you have two days. But you'll have a morning and an afternoon for each of those.
So, with that being said.
That takes care of that.
That takes care of that problem.
Yeah. But wouldn't we have to get another certified in case one of these are sick?
Substitutes.
I mean, would it be as, can, it ain't going to be just a substitute though, right? It's not going to be that easy, really.
Another thing, well, if we have a teacher who is sick in any other classroom, eight through twelve, we have teachers sick, we get a sub.
Right.
So, I don't think it'd be any different in this case unless this teacher in our preschool is going to be out for an extended period of time that they haven't made.
Same as.
They may be out, they may take their six weeks maternity leave, but we definitely need to have another certified teacher in there. So, I think the same rules would apply to the regular classroom as to this.
So, we had a substitute teacher pool for a couple of years for daycare specific. And it was for DHS licensed. And generally DOE obviously is a little more flexible because of the learning environment. And so, a college student in this example was able to come in and be a sub because it was not for my, it was my vacation, it was my sick. So, there are leniencies, I guess is the best way to say that, in recognition of those kind of emergencies or things.
They just have to have like safety.
They have, they would have to go through safety training, CPR, they have, would have to have some level, right? That's maybe different levels of teaching in high school or something, but yeah.
And we're, we're looking at hiring a center director. So, the director's going to be only the four teachers and that's all that director's going to be doing is working with those kids and those four teachers?
Yes.
So, that, that director could actually fill in if need be.
Oh, absolutely, right, absolutely.
So, you're, we're really looking at hiring five positions.
What kind of funds are we looking for upfront for this?
Well, to get the remodeling work done, to get it out, to, to top the bill, I'd say fifty, he said it might be safer for seventy-five. If that's doing the work in-house and not subbing it out to do that.
What about the grant?
If we get the grant, if we can, Debbie's working with DHS and talk to them about using those.
What's the amount we're looking to request initially then?
Well, fifty would be the Perkins Reserve Grant.
Except the max.
That's max.
PK max.
Yeah. And then just depending on some of the projects that she's finishing up with the ISM, what's, what might be available. Or possibly, possibly local.
What's our timeline if we had to make a decision? What would be the last drop-dead date to make this reality?
We were talking about that with Mr. Birch today. He, he has the Sullivan East Press Box Project and also the Culinary Arts Project at Sullivan East that, that he's got his crews working on, one in the winter and then one in the spring, maybe closer to the school being out for the culinary arts. He thought he could, he could get started with some of those things now, electrical work and things of that nature. So, obviously the sooner the better that we could start if we were going to move forward.
Okay, so I, I'm still hung up on hiring five new teachers, five, five new people. I think the program's great. I guess it's like the pendulum is swinging again. When I went to East, the program was there, but left while I was there, it was gone since you have before I ever got there. So, I guess it's swinging back that we start this again. So, out of those five positions that we're looking, if we put pencil and paper to know for sure that those five positions are going to be paid for through this. Because I, I can't support five more positions, fifty more thousand dollars out of fund balance unless I've got some evidence as to what's going to come, how, how we're going to take care of this down the road. Because we can't just keep pulling from general fund and keep adding positions. Although this is a great thing, but I need something to support, I need something that I can look at to support how are these five positions going to be paid for.
I, I have a question.
Exactly.
Am I allowed to ask questions?
Technically no.
Well.
You just speak out loud. Said you just speak out loud.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't not the director be just a teacher, just like the first-class teacher and the instructional teacher? So, it's not really a director position salary, would be just a teacher.
I wasn't even thinking of director. I said five teachers.
Five, five positions.
Five positions that we'd have to fund when you're, and when you're funding, you're not just looking at the salary, you're looking at the benefits, so.
But you're, you're looking at the marlin. I think the other school systems have, they've been more than, they've, they've, I don't want to use the word profit, but they've produced more revenue than what they've spent.
And I'm, and I'm good with that. I just want something in black and white that I can look at and says, this is what we're going to do. I mean, I'm not, let me back up to the survey again and remind me to come back to that. How did you all put the survey out there? How did it go out?
Just sent out district-wide.
I mean, by email or?
Email, email.
The same way that we do like the calendar, for them to vote on the calendar?
Yes, pretty much. We went out, please, take time to do this, quick survey.
Because I guess I'm thinking, if everybody had got this and read it, I'm, I'm shocked that you wouldn't have gotten back more than two-hundred-and-ninety-three responses. And I have had people say to me about the counter, why didn't you get that? Well, when I come back and check, yes. Well, when I come back and check, yes, it went out, but you just didn't. Now, take me back to where I was before when I was gonna ask you.
Opposition problem.
No.
No.
And it could be where it was older people that don't have kids.
I thought you said it's actually the survey response, right?
So, so I think one of the things that we need as well to go with what I'm asking for is yet a, not a survey, but a preliminary signup, if you will. And I totally agree that there would be, I, I mean, I think they'll fill up just like that, I don't have any doubt about that. But if we had just a preliminary that you could then say, we're, this, this many people have already committed and then we can multiply that out and see where we were now already paying for those five teachers almost from the get-go, I would feel much more comfortable about that.
Really, I'm listening to a performer that says, or, cause you've got twenty-four, twenty-four slots. What's it gonna, what's the monthly income on twenty-four slots based on tuition you would charge for, whether it's the, we already know that infant care is more expensive, et cetera, so that's what you're asking for, right?
Right, but we need those figures with that, what we're gonna charge and then multiply that out so that I can say-
That you're comfortable that-
Yes.
Somebody asked the question, what's the drop date?
What's the average call?
What made the decision?
At Dallas.
When?
If I could get something, you know, my next school board work session meeting.
If we could start after that.
I could start after that. Start come morning.
So February, or any way, or anything in February. But you said it's basically the city model, right?
Yes.
What, what could they provide us that, that could help us?
Probably a thousand, twelve hundred.
They've, they've been there. Share.
Yeah, that'd be good, so we could see all the, the numbers.
They're self-sustaining. Well, it's been there twenty-five years.
Yeah.
With, with that number.
Twenty-five. And that was before any TISA funding ever came to play, every Perkins dollar.
If we're, if we're gonna have to have this in February, I, I would agree with you, that's pushing. Could we get the information out to the board? So we've got a couple of weeks to look at it and study it.
Yeah, that'd be good, so we could see all that.
And then when we come, we won't have the need to maybe push it down the rabbit hole.
You've got a thousand dollars a kid a month. I mean, I'm just saying approximately, you've got a thousand dollars a kid, you've got twenty-four kids, that's twenty-four thousand dollars a month.
And Mary, I was, I was in the opinion that was a pretty good response with people in that age, you know, that had kids, so.
People thinking, oh, you're out of your child, Mary.
Yeah, I mean, we must have a lot.
And I think that thing, I think a cost you can't ignore, I think it's seventeen percent or whatever thing about leaving. The cost to, for the work you have to do to recruit and all the things, that, that's a hidden cost. If people say, I can't afford to work anymore, how can you reduce that cost, right? So that's a factor as well.
And then if it's really successful?
Got a bunch of them in.
We could, if travel, if travel, if, if it was really successful and travel was a problem, we could, we've got room in about every school.
Sullivan House is where they had one at, well, style.
Cause I would think at some point, the East-
I went there.
It would be, the cost per head would have to travel and go back to work.
Yeah, I was in, I knew that guy.
See, they got rid of all the-
But that's something we could do the first year.
Maybe I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, pendulum is swinging back.
Good question.
Then they got about twenty thousand dollars a month in revenue from their kids.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
You know, if you think about it, the tax, to see, it sounds like, it sounds like something this is needed.
Almost, it's like if we could have, is it, or I think around, around the house about seventy-six. And give it, yeah.
Obviously maintains two slots.
And actually their first priority, right? I mean, so saving the slots and unless they change it, there was a time, if you had a, if you were a high school student and you had a child there, then you were required to take that CTV class and work one of the, one of the class areas.
So you're trying.
Do you know that, that you're assisting a true school around the city? Two slots in every, I don't even have the two.
I guess it depends on the, right?
You're in your, your program will have, yeah.
I will, full information out of the usual income and then also the cost due into what, five or four. That's- We met, we met with Devin Cord and he's very eager for students to get their AAS degree through Northeast State, just like the LBN, they'll be able to get that degree before they graduate high school or pass their graduate high school.
You know, I think it also helps for the student who thinks they wanna work with kids to try it. And so again, you want, sometimes it's gonna find out what you don't wanna do as well as what you want.
Salary plus this, this, we give that. And, and how does Johnson City go about selecting which kids get admitted? Because those eight children on zero to two, those are gonna be high commodity. So how do you get selected? Do you know how Johnson?
We're up in the not, it's probably just application date.
But as we start the program though, is it not the first eight that you receive in your email inbox or in the snail mail or?
Do you do a lottery?
Because, you know, it gets, it gets kid getting in, but mine was thirty seconds later and I'm not.
Right. That's how it used to be. I can't answer that one, that's why it's so long ago that Johnson City can't teach.
People with one kid versus getting people with multiple kids, you know what I'm saying? So we get more.
I think the first thing we should do is figure out how to fund it before we figure out all the rules.
Yeah, salaries and benefits.
Salaries, benefits, and then-
And then the income.
Yeah, the rules can figure out later on.
I'll, I'll go ahead and get that and share it out soon.
Yeah, but the facility is really wonderful and the work you said that can be done. And as you said, how safe it is, I mean, it's an ideal situation to have, really.
The hardest information to give is the first year experience, you know, and I think soon as the word gets up.
All right, Andrew, thank you all so much.
Was there anything, you had one more slide?
So that's, that's basically what we would have to do, that, that previous slide, if you wanna go back.
He hasn't spoken to us yet.
That, that, those are the steps that would have to be in place before we can start, basically.
Yeah, this is a general.
And it does take an architect, you can't do this without an architect designing it because of the requirements of space per student.
Yeah.
Right. Lots of, right. But we did have the State Farm Marshal in there and he, he didn't see any problems, he wouldn't decide at all. I actually thought it was a good side. So, so those, those are the things that we would have to, to take care of before we'd be able to open. And then the next slide is just reiterating why this would work because it does provide us a good recruiting tool. We're always saying that we're recruiting against Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City. This gives us something to add to our benefits that we do offer childcare in-house. So I think that's a, that's a good recruiting tool added to our, our salaries being competitive and passing.
Recruiting students.
Recruiting students, right. It is self-sustaining by the model that we would be following. And it does create those work-based learning placements, which we're not even really taking that in. If they're taking that, that course, they're generating additional TISA dollars. We might not have those placements if we didn't have that program.
It's not just self-sustaining.
It can generate.
In, in the models that we've seen, it produces.
And we're helping the, the industry. These students are going into that career field, even if it's temporary for two years while they're finishing up their degree in some other, like education or healthcare, we're, we're helping with that, that market as well.
So.
Yeah, exactly, so possibly we're part of it, so. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. They really-
You're very forward thinking, I like that.
All the work that they've done is just part of what the first development elements district does and more of our county.
They have, uh-
Thank you.
The ones that were seventy-two percent. Is that, is that on the line somewhere?
I got it.
Yes, yeah. I know it's a major, we're working, um, survey.
All right, so remaining time, if we need to adjourn here, so we can get to six. So remaining time, we'll go over a agenda. Do you have any questions? I'll, I'll be brief, but if you have questions, please stop. Of course, we have, going down to the director's comments, just like to mention that our teachers will go back to work on Monday at six and our students will return on Tuesday at seven, so like, and the PD on Monday is in-house and in school. There'll be folks who are mainly on, on data in the first semester, the benchmarks, the test results, all their information that they, they have to go over to teachers and planning out the seventh semester. Unfinished business, we did have the bus policy or the bus conduct, a recommendation was made last board meeting to change that to where the drivers are not making the decisions about shouldn't be removing their, their bus. And that, if you read that in your board packet online there, you'll see that it reflects that, that they, they are not to make that call. They're contacting the bus supervisor or the principal or the SRO if they have a situation with students, that they're not to make those decisions on their own. On the East High Press Box funding, taking in the fact that we're not gonna need to do anything with the, uh,
Drainage.
Drainage, thank you. We are able to put those funds, which that was fifty thousand we had set aside towards the press box, but to complete project, we're about twenty-seven thousand dollars short, right, Bill and Ingrid? So we, to finish it completely, we need about twenty-seven thousand dollars. We, we have the ability to either take it out of fund balance or was it not, is what could possibly used? Make from the access road that wasn't used?
Either way, it's coming out of fund balance.
It's coming out of fund balance.
Our one option is to take it out of fund balance.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Would require a resolution regardless?
Yes.
Even that access?
Yes.
Right, so we wouldn't need a resolution there. And Bill's guys have already started or getting ready to start on, on some of that work. That's just what it's gonna take to finish it out completely, if you wanna do it and do it right.
We've got surplus from, that we did expand, is that right, from the access road?
Yes.
Might just ask you now.
First thing they know, she just sent us the email telling us what was going there.
What was that?
The access road.
About one point four million was still left over.
Okay.
So we're, so we're respectful.
Is this what I was asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that, that project turned out very bad.
Yeah, 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 everybody I've talked to that goes to like any kind of sport event, like the- They had a lot of relief from it there.
It sure did, and we're not finished, we're, it's a deal.
A lot of positive comments from it there. Nothing, no negative whatsoever.
No.
The XL Energy Lighting Project, there, the reason this is on here again is there's two options. We need to decide which one, so would require both tonight. One, we, we go with the TBA loan and Mark Gregor's here.
It's an EESI loan.
Yeah, EESI.
State Tennessee.
Or we could vote to use funds from fund balance.
I'll, I'll tell you guys, when I was a board member, this is the kind of decision I wouldn't make, both home runs or something. It's just which route you wanna take and there's benefits to both. To go with the EESI loan from the state of Tennessee, it's been fully reviewed and approved by the state, they're ready to go. They've got everything they need for that, so that's ready to go. If you can pay for it out of fund balance and you are comfortable doing that, from a business perspective, it's financially better in the long term, just because it saves you about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in payments on the back end of the loan. So that's the two choices, but either one is, is a winner, I mean, you'd be cash flow positive as soon as we finish.
Could you just talk to us briefly about this?
Yes, and, well, here, well, here's two, two things to consider were, one, we don't know how we're gonna finish out the year completely, so we don't know what the, the fund balance is actually gonna be at the end of the year. And going into next year's budget, where we potentially would be using fund balance to balance our budget, that was just a concern. And that, it's a one point five percent interest.
One thing is you can pay off early at any time with no penalty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I thought it was a sake, we could just do the loan and then if we find out we have the money, we can pay it off.
The plus of doing the, the payoff, pay it off is we save the one and a half percent, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand saved. So that's the two options.
Well, if we pay it off in one compound, it does save money, so they'll be compounded. Yeah.
Patrick Rouse?
I was just gonna ask Ingrid, we've got putting her on the spot, we're putting her on the spot. What would be, what would be, off the top of your head, your thoughts?
I think the easiest, quickest route is to pay it out of fund balance. And Chuck and I have talked about where we're at with fund balance and where we feel like we're gonna be. Obviously, none of us know where we'll end the year, and I don't know anybody that could tell you that for certain. We've also talked about, we've been spending fund balance a lot and we talked about when we get to that point, how are we gonna know we're at that point, that we say, no more? And what do we do when we get to that point? Cause there will come a day we get to that point. I don't wanna be at that point and I don't, I don't ever wanna encourage us to get to that point. With that being said, I feel like this is a project that is worthy of a fund balance allocation because it's gonna impact every classroom that we have. We can sit in this room and tell that we don't have the best of lighting in our buildings. And I think if we're trying to provide a good learning space for our children, lighting is the number one thing when you look at. For roughly two point two million dollars, we can touch every classroom, that's tremendous, I think. We have the guarantee of savings and it'll feed itself back into our fund balance. I'm comfortable with saying we've paid for it out of fund balance. But I also do that with a hesitation, not knowing where we're gonna be at the end of this year and to balance the budget for next year. We're just not there yet. We just don't have that ability to be there yet. So we've been working to try to figure out where we'll be with the city-county split and all that to get the best case scenario, but we're just not simply there yet. So I don't know that that helps you any as far as if I would make a recommendation. I think if there was ever a project that was worthy of fund balance allocation, I think these lighting projects would be worthy of that.
Well, you got one point four from the road coming back, right? One point four from the road coming back, right? One point four million, I think? And you said one point two million for this lighting project, right?
Two point two.
Two point two.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Just, just a quick bankloancalculator.com math. If we take the loan for one year and pay it off at the end of one year, we're only paying a little under eighteen thousand dollars in, in like interest. So if we take the loan and then we decide to pay it off, once we find out what our numbers are at the end of the year, right? And then we, like, depending on, that's for a whole year, you know, it'd probably be less. And then we, like depending on, that's for a whole year, you know, it'd probably be less, but I don't know. Because you said there's 1.5% interest on that loan.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. So, and that's monthly compounded.
It makes no difference to us at all. I mean, none at all. We're going to do the same exact dollar for you. Whatever route you take, we're going to do the exact same goal.
Yeah, so like right here's the math, 2.2.
So I think if we do choose to take the loan instead of paying off the balance, we're going to have to adjust our budget accordingly, as if we're going to pay that loan out for the duration. So whatever our payments would be on that loan for that year, we need to adjust our budget accordingly. So I would take money, recommend we take money out of electricity and put it in the debt payments and adjust it that way. So it would impact your electricity budget. We have a guarantee of savings, but it would impact that to where we could move that. Then the next year when we do the budget, if we've paid it off, we can move it right back to where it went.
Just a little ask for somebody, or make a recommendation that we accept the loan and then figure out by the end of the year when we can pension it. With the intention.
Yeah. You want to make that?
Next, and Mr. Robinson brought to our attention, when we were talking about the lighting, about the condition of the ceiling, the roof, the ceilings in the classrooms and commons areas for Sullivan Central Middle School. And I think we are all in a percent of it. It needs to be addressed. It's definitely not anything that we can point our finger at and be proud of. So Dr. Bill is here tonight. If anybody has any specific questions, but Bill found a gentleman in the painting service who agreed to go over there and do a small section. And it's held up. After two or three days, it's still holding up. But he's done a school in Hawkins County and he's done another area, a business maybe. Yeah, I think he's done a business. And similar situation and it's held up for years, I guess.
Did we figure out what, what the material is?
Well, it's top of the sale proofing.
It's like a newspaper.
It's a paper.
It's a newspaper. Is that what, is that the painted spot? That looks a lot better.
It looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
Like an old Moose Lodge smoking lounge.
So that's what. That's, yeah, that's the sample.
That's what Jonathan painted there, right?
Is that, is that what Jonathan painted?
That is it.
Yeah.
Do you have pictures of what the contractor painted?
That, that's what.
That's what Jonathan.
Oh, that's what. Oh, okay.
We have one section that is going. I made this part of the band years ago. And it's still holding.
Yes, it looks good. I mean, there's no comparison. There's no comparison. This fellow that, I don't remember his name, what was his name?
Ken Woods.
Woods. He, I don't know, he talked to us about what he was going to do. Over the years, we've had a lot of tabling in projects. Mr. Mainer, to tell you, there's blue wires running here and yellow wires running here. He has a plan for those. He's familiar with what to do with that. Air grates and things, he had a plan for it. Pretty impressive.
Just taking care of the issue.
Yeah, it's the first thing that when people walk in our building, the first thing, especially when we're enrolling kids and walking by the front door, it's an uncomfortable feeling. Nobody ever says anything, but the parents kind of do that. It's like, that's a really proud.
This one, Ms. Price and I walked in there, when you looked at it, you don't look, you don't look back after you look up.
No.
It's like the other, you, your neck's going, like Dr. Bill said, you're going to break it. Stay, what in the world is going on here? This, my glands act. Wash your.
Or mold.
Or mold because of the soot. So Bill, you want to share the news?
The price that he gave you was not to exceed $140,000. But there's 110,000 square feet of ceiling that needs to be painted in that school. Not to exceed $140,000. And that's with 110,000 square foot of ceiling in that school.
So here's, here's the good news to that, though. We're not going to ask for the fund balance. I met with Ingrid this morning and Bill and I, we looked at his maintenance budget. And by not doing a couple of things in there that he wants to do, and then figuring that we're going to not have as much spend out of possibly fuel, we think we can make it work. It'd have to be bid. It'd have to be bid.
What are the things you're not going to do? That could be critical or maybe not.
The budget. Four vehicles.
Four vehicles we had designated to purchase. And we're going to cut that down to two.
Got it.
And I had, what was it?
Fuel.
It's about $75,000 in fuel barring any kind of crazy rise in fuel costs. And that we predict we probably had leftover in that. Don't you feel that you need your four vehicles?
Yeah, that's not where I was going to go. I've seen so many.
I mean.
Well. I'd rather spend money on.
I'd rather have money for the ceiling than out of vehicles. Because I've got mechanics and they keep the vehicles going. I think for.
Yeah. They could go with that and then give him fund balance if out of vehicles maybe.
I think the other way around. We want to show the fund balance. I think for you to fund balance for a beginning, it can easily become, well, I need a.
Yeah, I hear your call.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's true.
I need to set a classroom.
Set the back presses.
I need a.
Yeah.
We made our budget. And the painting.
For it out of fund balance.
We had that renovation fund.
I know, I know. But that looks, that needs to be.
That does need to be, and that's actually not a bad price because I know most residential stuff right now is almost $2,250 a square foot.
I, Bill, what Ms. Woods told Bill is true. He gave him an estimate based on it's winter. I need to keep my guys working. I don't think he'll get that price in the spring.
He's going to do his work at night.
Plus it's an inside job.
Four o'clock in the evening. They work till one or two in the morning. Get everything cleaned up. So when the kids come back the next day, they'll have anything happen, simply. I walked in the other day and.
One more on the central. Are we looking at the, in the gym selling too? Or are we just looking?
Gym is always. There is a small spot in the little theater that's right above the stage. These will take care of it.
So pretty much everything about the gym.
Gym and the theater except the other spot.
Okay.
The library, it is a heavy thing.
Any other discussion?
I have a good question. You know the bill for the release time?
Yes.
Were we supposed to vote on that?
That, that's on here as the waiver of rules on the 6.200. It's allowed him to have a full credit instead of half credit for early release. Yes. And whether the rest is during our regular agenda, we'll be on time. We'll just go over each time.